Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, December 18th, 2017. As always, I would ask that you please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are ever thankful for the numerous blessings that have been showered upon our community both throughout the year and especially at this holiday season. We are overwhelmed with joy with the success that we've experienced with the access toy distribution program, and we are ever so thankful for the many who have stepped forward not only to donate, but certainly those who in the leadership role have really directed this to make it the great success that it is. We also are ever mindful of the many customs and traditions and great ideas that float around our town during the holiday season, and we are ever thankful that Batavia is a community that has so many nice things happening in literally every corner of town. Tonight, in its very special week, we want to remember all those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them and their families as they go about their vital mission. Tonight, we ask for guidance and direction in understanding and acting on the necessary items of business before us, knowing that in our hearts and minds, each of us is here to do what is in the best interest of our community. We wish Batavia a joyous holiday season, a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, and we are ever mindful of the many various beliefs that exist in our community, and we just ask that everybody, in their own special way, go about respecting and worshiping and doing the things that they want to do over this joyous time. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, whoever I got recently. Alderman O'Brien, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of all.
Assistant City Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosato.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Janzett. Wolf.
Here.
Oh.
That's Janzett.
Janzett's present.
I'm Wolf.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all fourteen members of the City Council are present. Do we need a motion to let Alderman Janzett attend by a...
No, you only need a motion if somebody you want subject.
Okay. I don't hear that, so we have a full council here. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed. I have one we would like to add very briefly, item 5A, which will be right after the consent agenda, and that's Mr. Bailey is here tonight to give us an update and a report on the children's access toy drive.
Okay, I move we amend the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? Assistant Kirk, take your voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. You have anything else, Alderman Atack?
No, I do not.
Okay, moving then to approval of the consent agenda, Alderman Atack?
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file September and October 2017 financial reports, November 2017 building report. Approvals: December 15th, 2017 payroll in the amount of $807,389.89. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,973,112.9. City council minutes for December 4th, 2017. Ordinance 17-71 in ordinance amending the wages and salaries for non-collective bargaining employees for the year of 2018. Ordinance 17-72 in ordinance regulating the wage and salary of paid-on-call members of the Batavia Fire Department for the year 2018. Approval of a Class C1 liquor license for Tusk Thai cuisine at 102 North River Street. I move that we approve the consent agenda as read. Second.
Move by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, fourteen yes, no, noes, none absent. Okay, moving to item 5A, Mr. Bailey, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council, good evening, Batavia. I came here dressed tonight like a candy cane, but I got two guys out here that's beating me. So, I don't know if you can see them on TV or not, but I'm gonna make this very brief and get out of here because my candy cane outfit's not matching up to either one of these guys. The toy drive this year was very, very successful, and the success of that toy drive was, one, because of what the mayor and the council put together to start of it, and then everybody in Batavia stepping up and making a Merry Merry Christmas here in Batavia. I can tell you that from December 10th, we had about 260 families that went through the toy drive. As of tonight, which I gotta hurry back, there's nine more families coming, we're approaching over 300 in Batavia. My family didn't do that, Batavia did that. We had a slight money situation, we didn't get enough toys, but on the Friday prior to the 10th, something happened. Batavia decided that, hey, we're gonna have a Christmas in Batavia. We got many, many checks, got a, I think the high school came through with 535 toys. All of the neighboring schools on that Thursday gave us boxes and boxes of toys to make sure that every child in Batavia, every family in Batavia, had a Merry Christmas. And that being said, even since December 10th, we probably had as many as 35 to 40 families that showed up to have a Christmas. We're still doing it based on the needs of anybody here in Batavia that needs to give us a call or email us. We've had phone conversations with the city, people have asked if they could join in. The police department has asked a few folks that could come through, the fire department has done so, and you as Batavia have asked for some of these folks to come through. Not gonna thank everybody tonight, just wanted to say Merry Christmas to all the Batavia folks that made a very Merry Christmas for folks in need and folks that would not have a Merry Christmas. So, again, I'll be back to thank everybody again with Rudy and say to everybody in Batavia, thank you, thank you, thank you for making a Merry Merry Christmas for those that would not have a Christmas in Batavia. Thank you.
Roy, when you come back, maybe one of the things you can bring would be, I'd be interested to know how many actual kids, you said 300 families, and I assume, being there with you on the 10th, there was many of those folks in there that were looking for four and five kids' toys, so, I mean, I think we're probably well over 600 kids who've been touched by this.
It's probably that number, Mayor, but I can tell you by families, it's well into that number, you know, if you take 600 families times two.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'd be interested just to know what the number is.
The numbers are big, but you know what, there's not one child, not one family, that didn't get taken care of for Christmas.
And I really commend you and everybody in the community that did that. I just think it's an important message for the community to know how many really were helped out there, not that we name anybody, but just a total number, because I think there may be some that don't believe we have that type of a need, and you and I know different, but I think that's something we could drive home with, you know, kind of a final report on this thing.
Next visit. Any other questions?
Thank you again.
Thanks. Have a Merry Christmas.
Okay, moving to item number six then, which is ordinance 17-66, the tax levy ordinance for the year 2017 corporate and special purpose taxes of $7,113,811.51. Alderman Atack, do you have this?
Yes. Per the direction of the City Council at the November 14th, 2017 Committee of the Whole Meeting, the tax levy ordinance had been prepared with a $600,000 increase to the corporate levy to be designated with, which an additional $300,000 will be designated for stormwater capital infrastructure, $200,000 will be for hiring of a building inspector and police officer, and the remaining $100,000 will go to the street capital fund. There was a public hearing on November 22nd notifying the public that a hearing will be held on December 4th. There was an article published on November 22nd that there was a hearing saying there to be a hearing on December 4th, which there was. The total estimate for the levy without debt service for the bridge is $7,113,811.51, and the total levy estimate for all property taxes is $7,260,036.51. The projected rate for the 2017 levy is .74096. And I move that we approve ordinance 17-66, the tax levy ordinance for the year 2017 corporate and special purpose taxes of $7,113,811.51. Second.
Motion, Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark, any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Ordinance 17-66 is approved, fourteen yes, no, noes, none absent. Moving to item number seven, which is ordinance 17-74, adopting a policy prohibiting sexual harassment. Who's got it?
I'll take this.
Alderman Atack?
On November 16th, the state amended the Public Act 100-0554, the State Officials' Employees Ethics Act, including Section 70-5, which specifically pertains to government entities. The act mandates all government units adopt within 60 days, which is January 15th, 2018, an ordinance establishing a policy prohibiting sexual harassment. Would you like to say anything, Wendy?
So, with that mandate, you can see attached is ordinance 17-74, which is the ordinance of us adopting a policy. As you know, or as you may know, the city already had a sexual harassment policy, so it's not that we didn't. Based on the state mandates, we had some small updates to do. You'll see in the policy it includes you guys, where in the previous it was more directly specifically towards employees, so it also includes municipal officials in the language. And then additionally, it also required some additional language under the Whistleblower Act and to clearly identify some other things in regards to, relates to how there's an ethics committee through the state. So, you'll see those things listed in it, where in our policy in the past, it just was more specific towards us as a city, and then it did list their outside, it did list, our old policy listed the fact that they can go to the Illinois Department of Human Services as well as far as to file complaints. So, you can see the updated policy based on the recommendations, so we just are following their recommendations and updated the policy.
Okay.
Well, I move we approve ordinance 17-74, adopting a policy prohibiting sexual harassment.
Second. Move by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Salvati for the approval of ordinance 17-74, any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Ordinance 17-66 is approved, fourteen yes, no, noes, none absent. Moving to item number seven, which is ordinance 17-74, adopting a policy prohibiting sexual harassment. Who's got it?
I'll take this.
Alderman Atack?
On November 16th, the state amended the Public Act 100-0554, the State Officials' Employees Ethics Act, including Section 70-5, which specifically pertains to government entities. The act mandates all government units adopt within 60 days, which is January 15th, 2018, an ordinance establishing a policy prohibiting sexual harassment. Would you like to say anything, Wendy?
So, with that mandate, you can see attached is ordinance 17-74, which is the ordinance of us adopting a policy. As you know, or as you may know, the city already had a sexual harassment policy, so it's not that we didn't. Based on the state mandates, we had some small updates to do. You'll see in the policy it includes you guys, where in the previous it was more directly specifically towards employees, so it also includes municipal officials in the language. And then additionally, it also required some additional language under the Whistleblower Act and to clearly identify some other things in regards to, relates to how there's an ethics committee through the state. So, you'll see those things listed in it, where in our policy in the past, it just was more specific towards us as a city, and then it did list their outside, it did list, our old policy listed the fact that they can go to the Illinois Department of Human Services as well as far as to file complaints. So, you can see the updated policy based on the recommendations, so we just are following their recommendations and updated the policy.
Okay.
Well, I move we approve ordinance 17-74, adopting a policy prohibiting sexual harassment.
Second. Move by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Salvati for the approval of ordinance 17-74, any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Ordinance 17-74 is approved, fourteen yes, no, noes, none absent. Moving to item number eight, which is Resolution 17-135-R, to include compensation directed into retirement health savings plan as IMRF earning. Alderman Atack, do you have this?
Yes, and I'm gonna turn it over to Peggy, but to explain, I guess the issue is mainly that this is going to be considered as compensation.
Yes, so, we have had an RHS, which is a retirement, sorry, a retirement health savings account. We've had those in play for several years. The employee groups that primarily are contributing to RHS is our public safety employees, which they aren't in IMRF. This back, actually prior to Bill retiring, the city administrator position was elected to be able to, when they leave, to use some of their payouts and put it into an RHS. There's no, was no cost to us as an employer, it's just they can then put that money aside and help pay for health premiums in the future. So, with that, they had made that decision, that position did, and through a review of those files, it was, found out that IMRF, in order for those to be considered, retirement earnings, which that was always our intention, we never had the intention for that money not to be considered towards the position's retirement calculation, so this is more of a housekeeping issue, we had to elect this resolution, they have to do that formally to have that on file. And while we don't intend probably in the future of having any IMRF employees at this point contributing in the future, but this is just something we need to have on file should we have a position such as a IMRF position put monies into RHS.
Okay, I move we approve Resolution 17-135 to include compensation directed into a retirement health savings plan as an IMRF earnings.
Second. Here we have motion by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Resolution 17-135-R. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Motion is approved, fourteen yes, no, noes, none absent. Okay, moving to item number nine, Kathy from Main Street, are you here to do the report for us?
I am. Good evening and happy holidays, everyone. I'm Kathy McNally from Batavia Main Street. I did pass out prior to the meeting tonight, a flyer on your desk in regards to our event we're going to be holding in January, Post to Present, where we're celebrating 60 years of skaters on the pond, where ice permitting, we're hoping for some cold weather, we're going to be recreating that iconic cover to the Post magazine. So, there's information there, and you can visit our website and our Facebook page for more information on that event. So, 5,000 hours, in 2017, we have had around 1,000 volunteers donate almost 5,000 hours to make downtown Batavia the place to be, truly the heart of our community. About 600 of those hours were donated by less than 50 dedicated members of committees. Those committee members give their time to help Jamie and I execute and plan programming throughout the year. These numbers do not include the 10 to 20 active downtown retail-focused business owners who meet on a quarterly basis, or our 13 Main Street board members who do work to make sure that Batavia Main Street's mission and vision shines through all that we do downtown. And as we come to the end of the year, we just wanted to say thank you to all of those volunteers, we truly could not have done it without you. As many of you know, because many of you participated, on November 25th, we celebrated Small Business Saturday around downtown. Locally-owned businesses signed up for a raffle incentive shopping day, we had just under 200 raffle tickets turned in, which we were incredibly happy with. People were given raffle tickets for spending $20 or more at each shop, that means that more than $4,000 additional dollars were spent in downtown as people participated in Small Business Saturday. We also would like to encourage people to remember our downtown businesses as the winter ascends on the banks of the Fox River. I know that it's much cozier to put dinner in the oven and eating your slippers at home than bundling up and heading down to Pal Joey's for pizza, but John Hamill and his staff will welcome you at their table. And the holidays might be coming to an end, so you might not have a need for a new dining room table, but Acosta's also has some pretty comfy chairs and yummy smelling candles for you to add to your home in January. And just so you know, live music doesn't stop once the snow flies. Kiss the Sky and Rivers Edge continue to welcome local bands throughout the winter months. There are so many businesses to frequent throughout January, February, and March, salons, restaurants, shops, even our local artists at Water Street Studios. We hope to see you all bundled up in your gloves and coats in downtown Batavia this winter because we are open. We wanted to keep our message short and sweet this evening so that everyone can continue on with their Christmas celebrations. We'll be back in January with a brief presentation from our Main Street Board President, Patrick Monahan, to include a 2017 look back and a 2018 glimpse forward. We will also be introducing the amazing high school graphic students who designed the new downtown banners that'll be hung in March. As always, if you're feeling inspired to get involved in this place, we call home, we welcome you, check us out at downtownbatavia.com, follow us on Batavia Main Street on Facebook or Instagram, or give us a call at 630-761-3528. Thanks for spending 2017 in downtown, and we'll see you next year.
As long as Kathy brought it up, I just wanted to take a moment, because I'm getting calls here at the office about this, and I just would like to throw some ideas out on the table for this program that we're talking about on January 6th. I'm very pleased that we're doing this, I think this could be a real interesting idea and something that a lot of people could remember. So, I've had several people suggest to me that this may be end up being a very ambitious idea from a perspective of how hard it is for the river to freeze anymore. And I've sat in on meetings at Seamap in Chicago where they are telling me that about 49% of all the water that's running through the Fox River is coming to us via water treatment plants, starting up in Waukesha, Wisconsin, and going down to Ottawa. And in that 49% of that river water that's being discharged out of these water treatment plants, all of it is heavily chemicalized, and so there's almost like there's non-freezing additives dumped right into the river, and so if you look at what's going on here the last few winters, the river has had a very, very difficult time freezing. And so, you know, I don't know if we're gonna get ourselves into this or not, but here's where I wanna go with this, and I look around the group here, and I think probably Alderman Brown is the only other person that could remember this and maybe verify this with me. But the painting that was done by Mr. Falter was done in 1950, I believe he did it in December of 1957, or the year before, when it was published in '58, he had done it the preceding Christmas, because he was here visiting his sister who was married to a dentist who lived in Aurora, so the story that I get. But what I wanna say is, when this was painted, the Fox River as we knew it, this was the old second channel, the river that used to float all the way through downtown, and where these ice skaters are in this painting are probably where today McDonald's Restaurant is, because the river, this part of the river went right up to Wilson Street, and there was a little bridge there, and water flowed under it, and it went right next to what was then becoming the Swanson Hardware Store on the other side of the street, and then they put it into some pipes and whatever have you. And so, to have the actual scene that we had back in 1958, that's gone. I mean, we, the city of Batavia, have changed the configuration of the river down here enough that, you know, today, obviously, we got Houston Street, so we've kinda moved the whole scene a block further to the north than what we had in 1958. But I guess what I am thinking of is, is that if it doesn't work on the river, what I'm gonna suggest is, is that, I don't know how easy or hard it would be to flood, but the area right in front of the Pegbon Center, out here on this grass, that's part of what you're seeing, where that grass is today, there were buildings tore down and other things done around there, the Riverwalk was built, that's probably closer to this location than the actual river that we're seeing out here today, because everything kinda got redone and rebuilt. But the one thing I would tell you is, I got caught up when I was in my newspaper days a couple times about this painting, and there was a woman that used to work at the old Batavia Herald newspaper with me, who was, had been there for 50 years, and she used to tell me the story about the day this came out, the then-editor, whose name was Sid Landfield, was sitting over at the Fruit Juice House Coffee Shop, which is now where DuPage Cabinets is at Main and Batavia Avenue, and all these people came in and started right away talking about, well, this is me, and this is my daughter, and all this good, and then their fight began because somebody else came, no, that's not your daughter, that's my daughter, and so this whole thing, so supposedly, Mr. Landfield went back to the office and he got Falter's phone number. Falter lived in midtown Manhattan in New York City. So, he calls Falter up, and he says, there's a big debate that's developing in Batavia about when, what day were you there, who was there, what time of day were you there? And Falter says, well, you know, I was there, and I sketched some stuff, and then I took some pictures, and quite frankly, a lot of this was done in the comfort of my studio in midtown Manhattan is where I finished this off. But he says to Mr. Landfield, so I am told, if you study the picture real well, you'll see that the vast majority of the people are not any frontal shots, they're all either
I'm all for this, and I just wanted you to find us another spot that you can do it, and I think you could go right in this grass right here, and you'd still be in this, where this painting is, that was probably water in those days.
You've got to have faith. Looking at the weather forecast, we're going to be all set, we're going to have ice...
I hope you're right, and I'm all for it, but if we...
And if we don't, in the age of Photoshop, I'll offer my services. If we don't skate in Fox River, I swear to God, I'll put them up.
There you go, yeah.
Thank you all very much, and happy holidays and a happy new year.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we, item 10, matters to the public, do we have anybody? Okay, the administrators' report, Laura?
Good evening, I just have a few items to share with you. We have been, we submitted a response to a request for a proposal from the State of Illinois Economic Development Office that was an indoor farming facility, looking for a place to locate their newest facility. It's a 150,000 square foot building. They were looking for seven to nine acres of land on which to either build this building or to convert an existing building. And we had approximately seven such properties to recommend to them. What's particularly important to them is that they would be about a nine and a half megawatt user customer, in terms of the amount of electricity that such a facility would use. And so this puts Batavia in a very unique position, having its own electric utility, and being such a large customer, our rate ordinance allows us to provide incentives to those types of large users. And attracting large users like this is one of the ways that we can utilize the contracted amount of power that, through NIPA, as well as, and then that kind of lowers the cost for everyone when we're utilizing all of that load, and perhaps even more than that load. So it's a very, very exciting opportunity for us. We've had a couple of follow-up contacts from the State of Illinois after we submitted our proposal, so we will be sure to let you know how the future negotiations of that go. There has been a slowdown in new permit, permit activity over the holiday season, but that comes in conjunction with a lot of people calling to get inspections because they want to close out projects prior to the end of the year. So community development has been very busy with those inspections. Also, it looks like the Prairie Commons Project is back again and going in full speed. So we met with them last week about their proposal for redesigning the project, and so we're looking forward to moving forward quickly and being able to allow them to begin building this project early next year. We also received concept development plans for the 206 East Wilson, the former Marathon Gas Station, for a mixed-use development there. The very preliminary discussions at this point, and so staff will be working with them to flesh out that idea, and hopefully soon we'll have something that we can put before you. We have selected a commercial real estate broker to handle the Tomlee Building, it's the O'Donnell firm out of St. Charles. And also, this past week, we participated in a walkthrough with a would-be buyer, an investment group, and their prospective tenant for the building that's located at 812 West Main Street, which is the former Van Deventer Manufacturing Building, and a building that's located in Tiff 4. Also, something to mention, you may have seen that one of our concrete light poles that's located on East Wilson Street, as at the corner of Redant and Wilson, was hit by a semi-truck last week. The condition of the damaged pole has really raised our concerns about the integrity of these concrete poles. These concrete poles are beautiful, you know, they're historic elements in our downtown, and we had actually budgeted money to take a look at how we might be able to reinforce those concrete pillars. However, the destruction of that pole allowed us a peek inside, and unfortunately, we really think that we're going to have to conduct a structural evaluation to determine whether those poles can be refurbished, or whether it's necessary at this point to replace them because it's a hazard to the, the electric system, to allow them to, you know, go into disrepair rather than be proactive and replace them as we can. That's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Just a quick question on the State of Illinois. Is there a timeline for this project?
I think that they said that they are planning to try to make a decision by the end of the year, so, very soon.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports, community development, Alderman Brown?
No reports, Your Honor. The only thing I have to schedule here for a meeting would be, the next meeting we're going to have is going to be on January 2nd, which will be the first committee meeting of the whole of the year. We don't have any other meetings between now and then, Plan Commission's been canceled, and I don't think there is a historic preservation either, so that's been canceled also until after the 1st of the year. So that's all. Thank you.
So what are you telling us, then, that we shouldn't have a meeting on the 2nd because we don't have...
No, no, we are going to have a meeting on the 2nd. That is the next meeting we're going to have.
All right.
Is that right, Laura?
It's the City Council.
We are having a meeting?
January 2nd is the City Council.
City Council meeting, that's why you threw me.
Okay.
We can't, the first is a Monday, so we got to go to Tuesday, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Okay, so the next Committee of the Whole meeting will be the Tuesday after that, a week from that Tuesday.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks for straightening that up.
Government Services, Alderman Atack?
I have no report this evening.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
No report.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
No report, Your Honor.
Okay, moving to 13, Other Business, anybody got anything they want to have some conversation about? Okay, the Mayor's Report, very quickly, I just want to publicly go on record as really thanking all the city departments for all the step up each one of them has done over the last few weeks. The Fire Department has been a real backbone to the operation of the toy drive. The Police Department was a tremendous help on the day of the actual distribution, because we did have some people show up that hadn't been invited, and we had some other issues that raised their heads. And so they were invaluable to us on that occasion. And then on the public work side, certainly Christmas Tree Lane and all the, we've got some new ideas that have been kind of thrown into the mix here in the last couple of years, and the fact that I still have people get tears in their eyes when they tell me that they cross the Wilson Street Bridge, and they look to the south and see the tree on the island, and they can remember that back in the 1930s or 1940s, and that was, you know, one of the very few things that Batavia did as a Christmas decoration. But the fact that, you know, we are jolly on the spot with the electric and the street department, and they're out there very early on, helping to get everything ready for construction of this, we wouldn't, and certainly erecting the Christmas tree that we have the big turn-on ceremony with and bring all the families down, we wouldn't have any of that going for us if we didn't have the high-quality staff that we have doing it. So I just wanted to publicly thank everyone on the city staff for all their support and expertise and talent, because I've had, I had some new people in the office last week who just moved into Batavia three months ago, and told me they were just overwhelmed with appreciation for this holiday spirit that this town put on, and, you know, everything from the story behind the Charlie Tree, to the trees on the island, to the, you know, the whole idea that we had the Santa Claus arrive on the fire truck with the football team behind him, and they were saying they had never seen such sense of community as was present in Batavia. So I felt very good about that, and that came from some brand-new people who had just gotten here, and they were really, became fans of Batavia very quickly because of those types of activities. So I guess one of the messages out there is, it's the little things you do sometimes that really catches the imagination of people, and really kind of brings them home to understand what the count's all about, and so we seem to have figured out how to do that, and I'm